All right, so now being 6 o'clock, I'll call the August 14th meeting of the Board of Selectmen to order. First item on the agenda is a 6 o'clock appointment with Ethan Stiles from the Board of Assessors to discuss their recommendation for legal counsel to represent the town in Cisco versus Plimpton ATB tax abatement appeal. So I'll turn it over to you, Ethan.
Thank you very much, Madam Chairwoman. For everyone who's watching, my name is Ethan Stiles and I'm the clerk-
Ethan, do you want to come up just so we can get you on a mic here? You can take this one. And that one. Perfect. You can sit if you want, or-
I think it reaches-
All right, then how about you take that one? And I'll take that one. It does reach.
Okay.
Perfect.
Anyway, so I'm Ethan Stiles and I am the clerk of the Plimpton Board of Assessors this year. And the Board of Selectmen have asked me to come here to talk to them tonight about our recommendation for legal counsel for the Cisco abatement hearings. We had two very well-qualified candidates apply for the position, attorneys Ellen Hutchinson and Richard Bowen. And we did deliberate and after, you know, careful review of their resumes, we suggested that Ms. Hutchinson be appointed to represent us in our legal matter with Cisco in this abatement proceedings. Now, just to give a brief overview of what these proceedings are. Cisco was filed for an abatement for two years, fiscal '15 and fiscal '16. And they've asked for, you know, they've suggested that they're seriously overvalued. I think, I don't have the exact figures, but I believe when we last talked about, they were, I think they were valued roughly around $65 million. And that's for all, you know, the land, the property and all that. And I think they were looking for a value of somewhere in the neighborhood of $45 million. So essentially, an enormous decrease. And they have applied for abatements and they were denied and they appealed those. And they appealed '15 and '16. And I'm not sure if they applied for '17 yet. But anyway, but considering the decrease in the revenues that we would receive from Cisco if their abatement was granted, we believe that the town should oppose their abatement at the appellate tax board and have suggested legal counsel. Now, this is a specialized field. We have also requested the appointment of an experienced appraiser, Stephen Elliott, and he's agreed to assist us. And I believe we've given you the figures of the sort of rates these Attorney Hutchinson and Mr. Elliott would expect. I believe that those were sent by email to you. So I think you have the numbers that you're looking at, but I think when you look at what it's going to cost us to handle the appeal versus what the town is going to, the amount of decrease in revenue the town's going to face, I think you're going to find that that number vastly dwarfs this number. And I'm not, and those numbers are on the assumption that this goes through a full hearing, a trial, probably about a two-day trial, and results in a decision to the town tax board. If there's any room to negotiate a settlement that would be more amenable to both parties, then of course, that option is not closed. So if you guys have any questions, I'll try my best to answer them. But anyway, that's the basis for our request for this outlay for legal and expert assistance.
Do we need to take any action?
I don't know. So you ended up, a couple of questions first.
Yeah, sure.
You ended up with two candidates.
Yes.
And you evaluated them based on their resumes?
Yes. Now, there was Richard Bowen and Attorney Ellen Hutchinson. I did meet Attorney Bowen here when we had that meeting the other day, last week. And, you know, obviously, a very well-qualified, accomplished attorney, but I'm not, and if I haven't, if you don't have the resumes, I mean, obviously, you don't have Attorney Bowen's resume. But when we looked at Attorney Hutchinson's resume, we felt that her practice was more strongly focused toward a practice before the ATB as opposed to a more general, you know, municipal practice. And we thought that her level of achievement was substantial and more qualified to handle a complex case involving commercial property that's, can be, you know, that, you know, it's a large operation and, you know, finding comparables for it is going to, you know, take some doing and some compelling arguments on both sides, both for Cisco and for Plimpton. There, you know, obviously, it's going to be a real, you know, a real argument as to what is reasonable. You'll probably have to go look at the other parts of the country perhaps to find equivalent operations. So essentially, we wanted the best experienced candidate. And if we did send you the resumes for both, well, for Attorney Hutchinson, because I said you already had Attorney Bowen's, you will find that she did attach, you know, a number of her cases, I think about a dozen cases, of where you could see, you know, the work that was accomplished. And she summarized it and I think we all thought that was very impressive. If you don't have that, I can have-
I don't think we ever got that.
See, and I see, I did have, I have my own copy. Unfortunately, my copy is missing two of the three pages of cases. So if maybe I can, once I'm through with here, I can ask Deb to send Bree a copy of the resume, a question.
So we have a question of which attorney. The concern has at least come up in some discussion. I think the trial date's already, is fast approaching?
Yes, it is. I believe, I want to say September 25th was the date that's-
It concerns me that that's very, very soon and very, very soon for either attorney to prepare. But I guess that's a separate issue.
Well, I don't think-
Well, that is a concern.
Yeah. We, in a brief conversation we had with Attorney Bowen, he assumed that you were filing for a continuancy.
That would be a reasonable request. And I think that if counsel were brought on board, I think that would be the first thing that would be done in this case. I mean, the board itself can file, obviously, for continuance, it's just a simple form. And I think that counsel probably would, you know, we appoint counsel that they would request a further continuance of reasonable time, you know, and request that of opposing counsel on Cisco's behalf. And if Cisco refuses to do that, then obviously, they would have to go to the board themselves and make that motion. I, you know, however, I would think that if either attorney said, "Well, here's the trial date, it's too soon, I can't do anything, my schedule's full up," then I think that that attorney would probably not, would not present themselves as suitable candidates. Granted, though, obviously, that in terms of practicalities, you know, work really can't start until you guys approve the contract because this figure is over 5,000. I believe that's, requires Board of Selectmen approval.
Well, we got an email from Deb back, it looks like it was six days ago, it said, "Ellen Hutchinson will represent the town in the Cisco ATB case." So it looks like, you know, the decision's already been made. We've got an estimate of $21,200 for assuming a two-day trial. There will be some additional costs associated as well for transcripts. So, yeah, I think our concern was that we're kind of behind the eight ball to get started. This is late, we probably should have had this in place a while ago. And I know, just for myself, I'd love for us to get together. We'll need to do it in executive session to discuss strategy regarding the pending litigation, to find out what Ellen's strategy is, what she's done, you know, is she working towards a continuance, just so that we can kind of find out what her game plan is and make sure that we have all of our ducks in a row, that we're prepared when we finally go to trial with this.
Yes, I would think that would be reasonable and necessary to do. You know, I haven't talked to Deb yet, I was supposed to today, but I just got tied up doing other things. And I'm not sure, you know, what sort of communication she's had with Attorney Hutchinson since that email you quoted. So I can get back to, I can get back to, or she can get back to Bree on that and say, you know, where they are in the process, what their understanding is.
I'm concerned, I thought, we got information that you were talking to both Attorney Bowen and KP. And I don't know where that came from. And so our initial assumption was they're both councils for the town, they're both well-respected, good, you know, your choice. Then all of a sudden, walked in and we find out that Ellen Hutchinson is going to represent the town. Now, I did go online, I took a look at a lot of the things that she's done, and it appears she's well-qualified. But I'm a little concerned where that first information came from, because we're in this together. If this goes through and the town loses it, it's like $360,000, give or take, that we're going to lose in revenue every year. And that's a big concern to me. I'm also surprised, too, that, I haven't done this before from an assessor's side, but don't you normally bring the attorneys in when you interview them, rather than just a resume?
That is an approach, I believe that could be taken, you know, unfortunately, you know, our schedules about the assessors, we meet about, we can only meet about once a month due to certain obligations outside of it. So I don't think we, I don't think there was really a good time for all members of the board to meet with the attorneys prior to the need to select an attorney, at least propose an attorney for selection. I mean, ultimately, I believe that, you know, when we say, you know, "You're the person for us," we always put in the little caveat, "subject to appropriation," essentially means that if, you know, and appropriation must be approved by this body here. So yes, I agree that it would have been ideal to meet with them in person, but unfortunately, the timing just didn't work out. And Dykes and I do apologize for many of my own failings in that regard.
Well, it's going to take a good deal of our legal budget, but in a sense, that's minuscule, because, you know, if you spend $23,000 and are able to reduce that $360 by a substantial amount, that's what we'd want to see. I just feel like, though, there was a little letdown, one in, I'm not sure where we got the KP from. I'm surprised you didn't ask KP, just because-
I'm sure they probably were floated around in the beginning, you know, someone may have asked us, "Do you want to use KP?" And I think we probably said, "Yes, we would consider them." But, and of course, Attorney Bowen, you know, has had a prior relationship with KP and, you know, and that may have been, they have some, any confusion. But I, I'm not sure if we reached out to them or if they responded to us. I know one or two other attorneys we did reach out to and they said they couldn't do it, or they had, or they couldn't, or that they weren't, or they, I think one or two attorneys said, "We can't do it in that timeframe, the 25th date of next month." And that was back in, and that was back sometime in May or June. So I don't think we had too, too many candidates on the table. And, you know, and I don't want to make excuses, but, you know, I'm sure the board knows that our administrative, sorry, our senior clerk, I believe that's her proper title, left recently. And so our assistant appraiser has been, you know, trying to handle all the jobs. And she's recently hired a new senior clerk and so-
I think it's administrative assistant.
Administrative assistant.
Yeah, I know we do.
Yes, I mean, essentially, the person who's, you know, you'd have in the office, you know, handling the phones, reading the citizens and all, and that sort of thing. So anyway, so, you know, I don't want to make excuses, but I do want to point out that if, that that has been an issue, that, you know, that the person was leaving and we needed to select someone to come in that role and try and find someone with any kind of experience with the assessor's office to help smooth the transition.
Well, we're in this together.
So is it a fait accompli, has this attorney been hired pending our approval or pending appropriation?
I believe that would be a fair understanding, at least if I were the attorney, and I'm not, I would, you know, I would sort of consider myself provisionally but subject to final approval. I probably wouldn't expend too much time on this, in this case, until I actually, you know, got the okay from the hiring, from the authority that says, "Okay, you know, we approved, you know, we approved the Board of Selectmen's recommendation, go on and get started doing your thing."
I mean, I agree with John. Somewhere, we had crossed channels here, and I think we all thought originally it was KP would be in the flow of things. I think my concern is, I mean, this is a $350,000 a year thing, and God forbid it doesn't go well, we want to at least feel like we were well-represented. I mean, it sounds like this person on paper is fine. I don't know if we can set it up, I would love to meet her if that's at all possible. Just so, however it goes, we feel comfortable we were making a wise choice.
I don't think, you know, again, I can't speak for the woman, but if I were in her shoes, I would be happy to meet with the representative that was seriously considering my application for legal representation, just as any attorney would for a client that's, you know, for a serious, for a serious case. But, you know, whatever we have, whatever you guys want to do, I would really urge, you know, speed. What was that phrase you used, Mark? The one about haste and deliberate haste or something like that?
Patient urgency.
Patient urgency. More on the side of urgency than patience.
We might be close to impatient urgency on this one. This is too big to get wrong.
Well, why couldn't we, Ellen is the Board of Assessors' choice to represent us as the attorney. Why can't we run things by KP as well? Or Rich Bowen for a second set of eyes? Just to make sure, because this is so big. And-
Well, you know, we did mention it to Rich Bowen, and he said Ellen Hutchinson is a comparable, you know-
Yeah, competent attorney, right.
Yeah. So in that sense, they're the experts and it's their choice there. I would like to talk, have her come in, though, and at least have some sense of what we're, because this is going to be a long, drawn-out thing. This isn't going to be something that goes quick. We're going to be in this probably for the next year.
Probably not. It could be. I mean, I do think that the September 25th date is unrealistic to expect a trial, but it's definitely more than enough time for us to get counsel and get them to have a continuance. I mean, obviously, there's no guarantees when you have to ask, especially if you ask the court for a continuance, because the other side wants to be difficult and say, "Where were you three, where were you four months ago when we were dealing with this?"
I would feel comfortable making, you know, us available to Ellen at her, at her calendar. And if we can't all be here, if I can't be here, I have no problem.
Okay.
Agreed.
Yeah, that sounds good.
Is that doable, you think?
I think so. If, now-
If there's any pushback, let us know, and then we can talk about it.
I think so. I mean, ultimately, because I understand that, you know, you're, you know, yes, we can make, we can make the recommendation, but ultimately, you're the people who have to approve this, because this is not an substantial amount of money we're talking about here. So ultimately, I would suggest that that would be, that would be a reasonable way to go about it.
Okay. Let's try to get that set up as quickly as possible, hopefully, next week. And then, when was the abatement filed? Do you know originally?
Well, it was, if I, if my, if the emails, all right, so, oh wait, I'm sorry. Let's see, it's fiscal 2016, fiscal 2017 that they are, that they're appealing. So, fiscal 2016. So I believe that they probably would have filed, you know, whenever, because the abatement deadline is set by statute, but it changed because of the shift from biannual to quarterly billing. So whenever they first filed it, would probably be, you know, I would like to say October of, you know, I want to say October 2016, but I can't, but my calendar might be off.
All right, well, then my follow-up question is, why did we wait so long to get an attorney on board?
I honestly, you know, the, I think that there had been some discussion of negotiation, but I, and ultimately, I don't think it went, it didn't go anywhere, obviously, because we're now at the situation. But Cisco didn't push it because they didn't ask for a trial date, and, you know, and there's also the issue with the appellate tax board, they may not be able to get to it right away. I mean, I know that some of our local citizens who have filed for abatements have expressed frustration with the, you know, the backlog of the appellate tax board. So I don't, so I, you know, I don't think it, you know, it was, you know, anyone was really pushing for this, you know, if Cisco wanted to drive it hard, you know, hard and get in there, they probably could have, but I think that there was room for discussion and eventually, there's just too far, the parties are just too far apart.
All right, so when we meet with Ellen, is this will be for the speech to discuss strategy?
I'll meet her, get a little history, and then her sort of synopsis of how we quickly go forward.
Okay, so both.
Yeah.
So we can meet her in open session, then we can go into executive session to discuss strategy.
If that's right, sure.
Strategy part, absolutely.
Okay, okay. So why don't we try to schedule something next week? I think we're booked at 6 o'clock, aren't we? We gave a-
Yes.
A meeting.
Fire.
But-
We can do it 5:30.
We can come in early, 5:30, and, you know, maybe we'll just meet Ellen, we'll go into executive session, camera won't be rolling, and then at the end, when we're done at 6 o'clock, we can introduce Ellen to-
Or if she needed later, we could fit her in.
Or we can fit her in later, yeah.
Yeah, we'll work around her.
So we'll work with your schedule.
Okay, so let me go up to the assessor's office and tell them what you've decided, and, you know, and we'll arrange to try and get Ellen here for next Monday night.
Right.
One thing you mentioned, you're clerk this year?
Yes.
Oh, who's chairperson?
Jocelyn Anderson's clerk, the chairperson.
Okay, okay. I thought you were still.
Thank you for coming in.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it, thank you.
All right, so Art, since you're here, why don't we take you on a folder? All right, so we've got you to talk about the Wolf Rock Farm follow-up. And then also, we were going to talk about small event permitting, but I don't know if we've heard back from counsel yet on that yet, so I think we'll have to hold that one.
Yeah, we have not heard back.
Okay.
Which one was that?
Small, small event.
Oh, small event.
Small events, whether or not they needed permit.
Okay.
Okay, all right. So you want to talk about Wolf Rock?
Yeah, there isn't any more news on the horse show side. There is another one coming up, scheduled on the South Shore, the South Coast website for Sunday, September 24th. And I believe that is a Sunday. So we should have something in place then. I know we're doing some research on a number of things with regards to permits that may be necessary. We're going to have to see if, in fact, there are permits in town. But we're working diligently on that and would be happy to present our findings to the board, based on our bylaws and some other things we're taking a look at now. So that's the, that's the horse show event side of things. I would also like to, on a very positive note, compliment Jim Mulcahy for his idea on a hazardous waste day. It happened Saturday morning, this past Saturday morning, from 9:00 to 12:00 at the transfer station and was an enormous success. Clean Harbors was there, they were the ones that took care of it. There were six people in hazmat suits. We were requested, or told, that due to their insurance regulations, residents must remain in their cars. But they came to the trunks and rear seats like worker bees, and the traffic moved in and out of there incredibly efficiently. At one point, we had cars backed up almost down a ring road. And it never stopped from 9:00 to probably a few minutes before 12:00. I mean, it was constant three hours. And I am happy also to report the town meeting approved $5,000, and we came in under budget.
By $20, I hear.
By $20.
Oh my gosh, congratulations, that's terrific.
But it's still under budget.
Great job.
So you didn't have to turn anybody away, that was perfect.
No, I did have a few people in the afternoon who looked around and said, "Where's the hazardous waste?" So I had to tell them they missed it. But I had some little information sheets printed up, so that if anyone does come in, Clean Harbors has a Braintree facility, which folks can go to on Saturday morning from 8:00 to 12:00. I believe it's Number One Hill Street, it's near the shipyard. And they can pay to get rid of their hazardous waste, same thing they took down here. And it's not terribly expensive. My former next-door neighbor used that when she was selling her house, and she made a couple of trips with her station wagon up there. And she said they were very, very nice, efficient, and it didn't cost a whole lot of money for what she had. So I'll be handing those to folks if they truly need it. Jim was there Saturday morning and he said, "Maybe we'd like to do this again next year, next August." So again, if FinCom and town meeting approval, we'll probably do it again next year.
I think it makes a lot of sense, and if, you know, you don't spend the money, you don't spend the money.
Exactly.
So I think it's a great idea.
We had so many compliments, that people were so thrilled. Just, "Oh, it's a great idea, and, you know, wonderful that you had it," and people were truly happy about it.
I think, I went through it, and the key was not getting out of the car. I thought that was, because I remember many years ago when we had one, where we'd walk the stuff up and it was kind of cumbersome and nobody was quite sure. That worked perfectly.
Yeah, it did. It speeded things along, but that's one of their insurance regulations.
It's good.
So it wasn't the town's, but it made perfect sense. And of course, they had the white hazmat suits on and everything, and just, it was terrific.
I was a little disappointed, though. Last one I went, they used to wear the white hats, too. Looked like Ghostbusters.
Put it in the suggestion box.
No.
Yeah, it must have been awful hot in those suits, anyway, it was warm.
Oh, yeah, they could have got them off right away at the end of the show.
Good job. And Jim says you were the catalyst for all this, so good job.
Thank you very much for your efforts.
Just back to the permit process again. I don't think you got CC'd on this. We did send off to Rich Bowen, as he requested last Wednesday, all those protocols that you gave us, both on large event and small event, asking him to comment particularly on small event, on what should be or could be required permitting, if anything. So we're waiting to hear back, and that'll be one more input. I actually had never seen a small event, it was sort of guidance, a couple-page thing. That was actually really good.
It was meant as a planner.
Yeah.
You know, a help.
And really, a very nice help for anyone doing a small event, on these are things you ought to think about. And I think the piece we just have to fit in is if there's any actual obligatory permitting that we want to require. Hopefully, he'll get back to us on that, just so we're not working at cross angles on this.
We'll let you know when we hear back from him.
Okay, appreciate it.
Yeah, appreciate your input.
So it was a fun day.
It was.
Really was.
Good.
And we're, one other thing we're doing, it'll be delivered tomorrow morning at 8:00 AM, we're putting in a 250-gallon waste oil container-
Ooh.
-at the transfer station. And so we should be able to start working with that right away, once we have a lock on it. The spill tray came in today. Dennison Lubricants, or a division of them, Boston Green, is providing the tank and the spill tray, and they will be coming and getting rid of the waste oil. Because I did have to turn away quite a bit of waste oil Saturday morning, you know, 30 gallons in this vehicle and-
I think that's-
... there. So, and I said, "Within two weeks, we will have a tank, you can put it right in there, and it won't cost the town anything." right in there, and it won't cost the town anything," you know, where they would charge us...
Right.
Fifty dollars for...
So how do you get to the tank? I mean, is tank going to be in the ground?
No, no, it'll be above ground.
Have some sort of a staging?
Yeah, they, uh, they're, the one that, uh, my son was a service manager in Weymouth, and tank was probably that big around, and probably stood four feet high.
Okay.
I'm not sure.
Okay.
And it's some kind of plastic.
Okay.
Polypropylene, probably.
Whatever it is, um, and then it, it comes with a cover, with a lock, and a hasp, and we'll have signage that will say, you know, "Please see attendant," because we, we, we will have to check the waste oil by smell and looking at it to make sure it's not contaminated. That's the only thing they want. Um, in there, you can put motor oil, you can put hydraulic fluid, which is just a highly refined oil product, transmission fluid, um, any, any vehicle fluids, petroleum-based fluids can go in there, however, they don't want it mixed with antifreeze or water, that will contaminate it, um, and...
They recycle this, right?
Yes, they do, yep, yep.
Great idea.
Which is, again, the reason for not contaminating, contaminating it. So the attendants at the transfer station will, will have to smell it, you can smell antifreeze...
Sure.
...or gasoline, and so we'd have to turn that away, but, uh, other than that, when we get 250 gallons, it's a simple phone call, a truck comes, connects to it, pumps it out, and we're good.
Excellent.
They also pick up at Linton Service Station, they're all over the place, all over New England, um, so, uh, good company, reliable, and they live next door to me.
Great idea.
We might even get a little money out of this, right?
Yeah, I hate to say this on camera, but yes, when we were paying three and a half dollars a gallon for gasoline, uh, my son was selling it back to them at seventy-five cents a gallon.
Oh, boy.
Because it has value. But now, the price of gasoline, of, of oil per barrel is down...
Sure.
And so, uh, there's a fee of a hundred dollars to pick it, to pick it up, but that will go, as the price of ga, uh, a barrel of oil goes up, that price will go down, because it has value to them.
Okay.
I'm sure some of that stuff has been ending up in your, in your canisters, anyway, so...
Yeah, so the more we can, like sharps and everything else, the more we can keep out of the waste stream, the better.
Absolutely.
Yeah, absolutely is right.
Great.
Well, thank you, Art, very much.
You're welcome, thank you.
Okay, so on to update, updates and discussions, community paradigm, executive search for town administrator follow-up. Do we have any, anything to report on that?
Uh, just talked to Bernie before he left, and he, he said it would be about a week before they'd have some feedback for us, and they would get in touch with us.
So they'll attend the meeting, then, to give us feedback, or?
Um, I didn't ask him how.
Okay, so we'll have feedback, okay.
I assumed they'll come in.
I would think so.
In fact, I think he did say that, that they'll want to sit down with us and go through.
Okay.
Uh, he suggested, now that I think about it, a workshop meeting.
Okay.
Okay, not a regular meeting.
Okay, all right.
Good. I think that makes more sense, too, because we can spend some time on it.
Yeah, so we'll have to look at our schedule, but we'll wait to hear.
Yep.
Okay. All right, employment opportunities, fire clerk interviews?
Uh, we did do the interviews, uh, the chief, I believe, has a candidate in mind, but I haven't heard, since he's hosp, or ill, I haven't heard where he went with that, so I'd rather not say until...
Okay, all right, well, so we'll just hold that one until next week?
Right.
Okay.
But there is a candidate that we think will take it.
Perfect, all right. Assessor Administrative Assistant interviews, that position has been filled, so we can scratch that. Fire EMS, hire consultant.
Uh, all four have confirmed they'll be in, so we've got next weekend, uh, next Monday, I mean, and the Monday after, two, two a night, six o'clock and eight o'clock. I'll send you the, resend the...
Okay, terrific. All right, solar.
Um, absolutely nothing happened. Everything's in the solar companies' representatives' ballpark, I've made it clear, we'd like to move on, um, haven't heard back, so...
Okay.
Their ballpark.
Yep.
All right, so we'll just leave it on there. Commonwealth of Mass procurement charts.
Okay, so...
Procurement 101.
Yeah, this, this, this could be a huge topic. I thought I would take just one small piece of it for tonight, um, and I think I emailed you, but I also am giving you copies.
Thank you.
This is the state procurement charts, and, I mean, what little I know about procurement is mainly through cheering the CPC and having projects and having to get answers. Dale was our former procurement agent, um, um, he wasn't overly enthusiastic about the position. So there are a lot of different charts here, they're all based the same way. These are revisions from 2016. Essentially, there are three major categories, projects under $10,000, projects $10,000 to $50,000, and then over $50,000. And whether it's building construction contracts, or public works, or, uh, construction materials, they're all basically the same. I wanted to bring attention particularly to the very last page, which was procurement of supplies and services. Actually, the other ones are quite similar, but the basic overall, um, pattern on these are things under $10,000, the procurement procedure is simply sound business practices, no advertisement required, and the award can be given to, uh, the responsible person offering the best prize. The in-between range, the $10,000 to $50,000, written purchase description, ideally getting three quotes, no advertising, and then theoretically, the person with the, um, quality sufficient for the job at the lowest price is the one that's chosen. And then for over $50,000, sealed bids and that whole process, which is a big deal. So this is what I understand about this, and the main thing about this is, you know, not making a big mistake. The, um, and, and of course, you know, being government and being lawyerly and legal, then there are 10 million exceptions in here, and, and it gets really tricky. One of the things I noticed in our correspondence, actually this week, is a bulletin from the Office of Inspector General who oversees all this, and there's a half-hour program on procurement training, a video, so I'll try to do that within the next week or so, and if that looks fruitful, I'll pass it on.
Perfect.
Certainly, I, we will limp along, that's not the right word, we will continue along as we have been all along, little tiny town, have not had the town administrator that presumably has expertise, hopefully that next person will take this on, and...
I do think what we've done over the last year and a half, so...
Yep.
Um, you know, the administrative, uh, the town administrator, certainly, I think that falls in here, and we've done it correctly.
Yep, absolutely.
Right.
Same with the fire consultant.
Yep.
I think, too, the, um, the projector...
Yeah, the IT.
Is under $10,000.
Right.
So that piece, and the way we went through the Silver Lake Regional, certainly, I think the business practice aspect of it is, so I think we're, we're, maybe just because we're trying to do the right thing anyways.
No, and I think we are, and I think we're actually quite a bit more fastidious than some towns on this. So that's one half of procurement. The other half is, I mean, in big towns with a lot going on, there's a whole purchase order system and that whole bit, and we are so far away from that, and somehow, I think we're functioning pretty well in the way that we've just moved along with this.
Just so you're aware, we don't use purchase orders, but I had to get a sign one time, and, uh, I needed a, the vendor I was dealing with wouldn't take it unless they had a purchase order, so Dale just cut me a purchase order.
Yeah.
Just made one.
Yeah, sure.
One.
Yeah.
Wouldn't be hard to do. Um, so I, that is truly 99% of what I know about procurement, and thank God, I think it's enough along the way, and otherwise, we have town council if we're not sure.
Yeah, great, I'm glad you're doing this.
Yeah, absolutely. And that segues right nicely into combo, combines.
Combis.
Combis.
So I guess, is that on the agenda?
Well, it's procurement.
Oh, yeah, all right.
Yeah.
So, um, so there were two pieces in this, I, I, the Dennett School Water System had to go out for bid, and so there was work to be done with combines. I know very little about this, other than we got an email also last week, that we had to update our stuff for the new fiscal year, and I took care of that today. And I guess they simply, they are certainly the listing agency for the state when there is a big project to go out to bid, and I guess they keep track of it along the way. But, um, it's the first I've seen or heard of that, mainly because we haven't done so many big things like that.
True.
But is that, that's where we can also go on and see if this, where do we go? There's someplace in the state that allows you to look at excess, like furniture, et cetera?
Oh, surplus?
Yeah. You know, honestly, I don't know if that's this or not, I mean, I am new to this as of the last six days. I can look around in there and...
If you find that, I'd be interested in that.
Because actually, I think we probably sold some stuff that we had on that old truck or something like that. I certainly can take a look around, see if I can find...
You might even find that in your half an hour.
That might turn out more than I want to learn.
Too much procurement. Townhouse Legal Strategy Meeting Follow-Up. Very good meeting last week, um, we had, uh, great attendance, much better than I think any of us were anticipating, and, um, a lot of really good input, feedback, back and forth, um, there was definitely interest in continuing, so we'll continue to refine it and...
So can I bring up my legal?
Yeah.
I sent a note out today, um, I don't know if you saw it.
I did.
And I, the thing that, we have great people running these boards and commissions, and it just seemed a little to me that we need to give them a little more flexibility somehow. And if we gave them, I was thinking, if we gave them an automatic two hours to work, you know, over ten committees at a hundred and seventy dollars an hour, that's like $3,800, something like that, let's say four, under, a little under $4,000. And if we had some sort of instructions that said, "Look, this is when you're in a situation where you don't have time to come to the board of selectmen, you've got something going on that really is immediate." I'd feel comfortable myself, you know, these people know what they're doing, or they wouldn't be head of the boards.
Mm-hmm.
And I just thought it was a way to maybe put in something like that, and yet, if there was anything that was going to result in something bigger, so all of a sudden you're talking ten, twenty, thirty, you know, hours, where it gets up into Big Bunny, that we'd need some sort of a system that would capture that. So it was just a draft to get us thinking about it.
I was a little hesitant, um, just, I think that we've done a, a good job, um, trying to control legal, and I feel like we've been really accessible, too, where someone contacts us in, we've had some kind of heightened situations where they need an answer right away, and I think we've been responsive in giving them the authority to contact council. That's my only concern, is that I think we have been accessible, um, that maybe we don't have as much control if we do this, but I think it's a, on the other hand, I think it's a, a good idea, I think I'd be more willing maybe one hour than two hours, because then they get, have the chance to at least speak with council, get the ball rolling, and then if there requires further, um, follow-up, then we know about it and, you know, we're involved. But then also, when they ask us, we're aware of the situation ahead of time, so that I can communicate it to you when, you know, I learn of these things, so that we all know right away. I, and I think that's, we'll know faster where we have to get permission, rather than where we're giving permission after the fact, you know, we could have gone by, depending on when they meet, when we find out they actually met with council.
I, um, well, one, I just read it an hour ago, and so I want to think about it. I mean, I think you're exactly right, there is kind of an issue, and it does slow things down. I, I'd be very concerned, I mean, I think this has happened in the past, this stuff just starts snowballing, and they're into ten or twenty hours before we even start, and you know how town council is, they easily, on one question, can get down their own path. So I, I think you noted in the email that it'd be a little bit of an administrative problem. I just, I feel like, um, I mean, I agree it's a problem, my, my initial reaction is maybe, um, would be to simply refine our process, and, um, maybe say, I mean, we've always said that if there was something that was real-time sensitive or an emergency, they could come, that the chair could approve it, and, um, it feels to me, if we simply emphasize that, and I have complete faith in the chair making a decision anywhere along the way...
I do, too.
Or for that matter, if you weren't around the vice chair, I, I, I think the problem would more or less be solved. I mean, I really like them coming to us and talking to them about it to the degree that we can give them direction, and I very much like hearing what we're getting into before we start getting into it. Maybe if we simply emphasized that in an emergency, we can approve it right away, or in a time-sensitive issue, go to the chair, go to the vice chair, and we're glad to do it right away. And then the chair or the vice chair could give council, "All right, you get an hour and keep it to that before you come back to us." So that, off the top of my head, I thought that was a much easier solution.
Well, and that needs to be communicated, and I don't know as if people know that now, that they think that there's a process, and, "Oh, we've got to come before the board," you know, but in an emergency, we're accessible, and we will certainly give people the authority to contact council.
Yeah, we should probably reinforce that.
I think it's a little bit different than it used to be, when potentially, um, even one of the selectmen might give permission, and they'd be off in a, or even the selectman would be off in a twenty-hour thing along the way. I mean, my other concern, actually, is I, you know, the chair of ZBA wouldn't know how much time, uh, attorneys are putting in anywhere along the way, nor would we know until the bill comes. So I totally appreciate the issue, and I think we streamline it a lot. I think we shouldn't decide tonight anyway...
Oh, no, no.
...because it wasn't on the agenda.
Right.
But maybe that's a start, maybe we'll put it on the agenda next week...
Yeah.
...and we each have a chance to refine our thoughts.
Yeah, this was just more to get us thinking about it. I, it came to me out of our meeting with Rich Bowen and, you know, the fifteen boards, that, like Debbie Anderson with her issue around, you know, a board member and...
Yep. Um, I mean, I totally agree, I spend, I have spent and continue to spend so much time agonizing over stuff that often is a five-minute legal conversation...
Yeah.
...that would take care of it.
Okay, so let's think about it.
Yeah, yeah, let's talk about it next week, and, um, you know, we are trying the preventative legal approach, and we certainly want to be involved in things sooner, and, you know, we encourage people to reach out to council if they have questions, because we want to do the right thing from the get-go. So, um, let's put it on for next week.
A little tiny side story on this, because, and I think we've done a great job of communicating that we're moving toward this preventative law thing. Duxbury, last week or the week before, hired KMP as town council.
I saw that, yeah.
And one of the main things that swayed them was KMP's, um, presentation of preventative law, and it's interesting that that's come out of nowhere, we had never heard that, and I actually wonder a little bit, I may be dreaming this up, that we may have been a little bit of an impetus of that.
I think we were, I think we were.
Well, they didn't want to be a fourth selectman, but...
Yeah, right, there you go.
All right, so we'll bring back legal next week. Um, WATD, Weekly Interview, a BOS Agenda with Dan McCready, and then I think there was Boston Globe as well.
Boston Globe as well.
Okay, so what are your thoughts?
Um, so these were emails, I guess, that came, I guess we all got it. I spoke to Dan McCready, uh, I don't know, earlier in the week, in any event, I, it's, the, the key on each, each of these, it feels to me the chair should have first crack at it, and it certainly feels if the chair doesn't want it, I think we should just go down the line, that the vice chair, uh, the lowly clerk, that's me, next. I did the ATD thing this morning, because I think you asked me to, and, uh, it was, I mean, it was cute, she asked two questions and it was over. It was live, so, you know, really had to rein things in. So, I mean, I am glad to do either one, but I...
Do you want to take one, too? I, I can't do these at work, and I think a lot of this happens on Mondays, and I'm just not available.
I'll take...
happens on Mondays and I'm just not available. So I don't know...
I'll take the Globe because the Globe is maybe once every six months.
So I get Monday morning in between clinical duties, actually.
Yeah, you get WATD and you'll do the Globe.
But if you have a problem, let me know and I'd be glad to...
I had a bunch of needles in a dog this morning and he was running out the room to do my 9:00 AM interview.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that.
Okay.
All right, so we've got that squared away. All right, Correspondence.
All right.
All ready.
So we've got a bunch of this already. So these are, an announcement of MCPPO, Mass-Certified Public Purchasing Official Program. There are three different programs. I think this probably ties in a little with procurement, the purchasing part. This is pretty specialized stuff and I don't think anything we'd be involved in right now. In Correspondence, last week was something from the Census Bureau, things that we need to do ahead of that for street things. They look quite complicated. I went to Tara and she was well aware and town clerks are well aware of that. She's going to take care of that. Let's save that for a minute. This is a note from the law firm that had told us about a foreclosure at 150 County Road and that auction has been postponed until September 6th. I'll let that one sit for a minute. This is an announcement from the state about implementing, a conference, implementing best practices from municipal officials, municipal officials, including financial management, housing, cybersecurity. That is at, in Worcester at Holy Cross College, September 18th. I cannot do that.
What did you say the topics were?
State and local officials share ideas and attend workshops, implement best practices in the area of financial management, housing production, cybersecurity, regionalization, transportation, energy and environment.
All right, I think I'd like to go on the housing production. Is there any cost for this or is it free?
They do not note it, but I, most of those, I've gone to a fair number of them out there and at most it's like $50 or something.
Holy Cross?
Yeah, we put it in.
Okay, and that's what time? Actually, can I take that?
It doesn't say. You can have that.
Awesome.
I may go with that. I may want to do that technology.
Sure, okay.
We did that last time.
Yeah, we did that last time, which worked out really well.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm going to put it on my schedule.
Okay.
Perfect.
Plus, it's a nice place to go.
It's a beautiful campus.
Up on that hill looking down, that nice building.
So nice, yeah, so nice.
If I could go back to college, I'd go there and I'd, "Yeah, that's pretty." This is advertisement for bids. This is the public notice to bidders for the Denneth School Water Treatment System. They're accepting bids until August 30th and I guess they'll be, that couldn't be. Except until August 30th. This is John's email.
Legal. Oh, no. He wanted to amend the minutes to include...
The people who are there.
No, no, actually, that's what we just talked about. Actually, yeah, that's what we talked about.
I think he cut and paste that a whole bunch of times.
I did.
Just keep pasted it. This is Virtual Towns and Schools. This is a training on custom web applications for the public sector. We may have enough going on in our lives right now.
I agree.
I mean, that's a useful project.
Absolutely useful.
All right, now, a couple more here. All right. So this is a letter from Richard and Tracy Urowitz regarding the bite incident and just their description saying that they felt that they had never restrained any examination of their property or their animals and just wanted to let us know that and asked if there were any future meetings where this subject came up, if they'd be invited as well.
Absolutely.
You just predicted that.
Yeah.
Okay. No, go ahead. Go ahead.
And then the last one is... This is an email that I sent out about remote participation that maybe was instituted by Rich Bowen and when I had nothing better to do, I stumbled and this, the intent was, or as I understand this thing, we can vote to authorize remote participation. If we do so, it's not only us, it's every board, commission and committee. And there are a bunch of rules and that's all fine. We were wondering about this in terms of solving the chronic lack of quorum for planning. So in section 29 or chapter 29 about remote participation, I came across this thing that said, "Quorum of the body, including the chair, shall be physically present at the meeting site." And concerned because if we're trying to solve the planning board thing, if that's it, then that wouldn't work. John found section 30, or chapter 30A, a different section about local commission on disability. The way I read that, John, is that that was for a local commission committee or something on disability specifically.
I didn't read it that way. I don't have that.
In any event, I think this is probably a simple thing for Rich to let us know about and I...
Yeah. The way I read it was that, first of all, I didn't think it was the disability section. Didn't say that.
It what?
It wasn't, it didn't, I didn't believe that was the disability section of the law.
No, it wasn't, but I don't know if I can easily...
It said that if, as long as the chair was physically present, then somebody else could participate remotely.
But it, it does, but I read it to be for a local commission on disability.
I didn't see that.
In any event...
So we need Rich to just give us a quick answer. Or KP, I don't care.
Well, since Rich started with it, it was on topic.
Yeah, that's true. That's what he did, yes.
I am, I'm glad for you to do it. I'm glad to just write it and see.
No, no, you're...
So we'll just get that solved. Hopefully, I mean, that'll be a five-minute thing.
Sure.
Assuming, going back to Debbie for a minute. Assuming that if she's physically present, that they could, you know, dial in. Now, it has to go to town meeting or not?
No. As I understand it, this is a vote of this board.
And then once it's done, it immediately takes offense?
I mean, the key is everyone has a shot at it. I honestly, I know the downside, that before you know it, you're doing phone conference calls or videos rather than meeting. Boy, the upside is, I mean, the private sector, the nonprofit sector, it's the way people, it's the way things work.
Sure. My daughter works from home all the time on Skype.
I mean, I think if we did it, I'd certainly want to strongly encourage physical presence, but it's just an option.
The other thing we might want to do is say, "We won't approve it unless there's a video." We've been moving towards having the boards do video.
I'm not sure we can require that. I mean, the state law says audio is fine.
Right, but there's no reason we can't say it because we're the ones who've got to vote the law, vote that in. It's just a thought.
Well, and then there would be proof too, that there was remote participation.
Plus, there would be some catalyst to say, "Hey, I guess I ought to physically be there."
I mean, I'd be, I'd be interested in doing it if it takes care of a quorum problem. I'm not sure I'm interested in doing it if it doesn't solve that issue.
Exactly. Yeah, I think you're right.
Or it'd be no purpose if it doesn't solve the quorum.
Well, the purpose would be is if I was traveling, I mean, you could call in and not miss it and you'd have to put up with my two cents worth. And if you were sailing, you could call in on that.
If I was sailing, I would not call in. I know the town is a very good dad. I'll see you when I get back. Okay, so you're going to check on that one?
Yeah.
Perfect.
All right. Punt in Halifax Express. Well, there's a note about the hazardous waste day that went so well. The fire department grant, nice picture, half date picture. That's a good picture.
Yeah, it is. It's a beautiful picture.
Centerfold this week is the teddy bear tea time at the library. Those kids look like they are having fun. The adults actually look like they're having fun. And then the last page is an art exhibit by Ryan Gillis at the library and that looks interesting and I want to make it over there and see that.
Yeah, sure does.
And would thankful miss a report that that takes...
I'll go stick in your correspondence.
All right. Dates to remember, 8/21, we're meeting at 6:00 PM and 8/28, we've got appointments with the fire consultants at 6:00 and 8:00 PM, so those will be, I'm looking forward to that. Besides that, that's, looks like that's all we've got. We'll have something, most likely next week, a working meeting with assessors.
Bernie Lynch.
And Bernie Lynch too, so we'll probably have those on off nights or possibly on the Monday, we'll try to get the assessors in. All right, goals for coming years. Financial management, I completely forgot to contact Monica about our report, so I will do that when I get home to get us the draft of our financial policies. Public safety, anything?
No, they meet...
I saw them walking by. P3?
Oh, P3's going down and having a preliminary session with planning
Okay.
just to actually proactively be on top of things.
Good.
Which is great. Public safety meets next, this one? Is it, no. No, I guess it's next week and I probably will be able to...
Okay, terrific. Technology?
No, no updates really. Tara is drawing up the list of emails and we'll give them to Mike Rodriguez. He's waiting for them and we'll go forward.
Perfect. Grants, anything with grants? All right, men, volunteerism? I don't have anything. Okay, all right, that's, we'll just continue to hold it. All right, minutes 8/7?
Well, back to that. Heidi, has we, has she ever responded to us?
No, I'll touch base with her again too, about bringing her in to talk to us about that, the program.
You know, my only concern there is that, you know, she probably, I'm not sure she's going to spend a lot of time on it. I wonder if that were too much of a time obligation, if even just a phone conversation with one of us.
Okay, all right, to talk about grants?
Yeah.
Okay.
If she could come in though, I would...
I mean, that'd be great.
Okay.
But if she can't, I think you're right.
If she can't, then we'll have a plan B. Okay. All right, minutes from 8/7, we did not receive those, so we'll hold those. We do have minutes that Mark submitted for our meeting on 8/9. Those looked good to me. I liked your addition.
With the amendment, the...
Yeah, that's fine.
The people who attended.
Great, okay, thanks.
So I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes of 8/9 as amended?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. All right, so rants and raves, do you want to mix it up tonight?
Two things before. One, I might give you this sometime. I don't know if you guys have this, but it's just a little history of the... Are we gut to be the size we are?
At one time it was called wenetuxkit?
Yeah, that's what they say.
What does that mean? That must be an Indian word.
Indian word, yeah. I don't know.
Probably means swamp land. Or mosquitoes?
Ghost flies, three heads and a stea.
Ticks.
Anyways, that's for your...
Awesome, well, thank you.
Debbie Anderson, just back to there for a minute. She did send me a note saying, you know, she got, the board member really, she doesn't feel comfortable having that person come down the stairs because of their disability, asking if there's a room that she could meet in up, you know, on this floor. And I don't know who else is in here on Monday night, but I would think somehow we ought to make, we make a room available.
Other than, I mean, at worst, the lunchroom's usually available.
Or maybe Tara's.
Tara.
Conference room?
Yeah, the small conference room.
Financial or even the town coordinator office.
Yeah.
There should always be enough space.
Okay, I'll go back and just say, yes, we'll work with her.
Absolutely, yeah, definitely. Okay, anything else before rants and raves?
Nope.
Okay, do you want to go first or you want to mix it up tonight?
I can't, I have to ask though, what prompted this?
I'm heavy into ancestry.
So it's town ancestry.
My wife's family used to live in the house next to the country store. In fact...
The house next to the country store.
So Bruce, whether, no, Bruce...
Oh, yeah, okay. Gotcha.
The little, yeah. There's a long story associated with that, but it's a family story. So I run across stuff. So raves. I had a rave for the hazardous waste, but that, we've talked about that. It was well done, it really was. I'm very pleased that they pulled it off the way they did. So I have a little rave for a neighbor. One of the things that this neighbor does is if you go down Ring Road, you will find as you pass Crescent Street, it is mowed all the way down to the stream and back the other side. And Mr. Dunbar's been doing that for quite a while and I think that's just a neat thing, you know, so, you know, there's probably other people doing things like that in town, but I'm not aware of it. I am aware of that one and good.
Very nice. All right, I've got a rant and my rant is just the things happening again in the world and the need for tolerance and how diversity is so important to, you know, this nation. And it just, it was a troubling week and it just, I don't know, it just, it's very troubling. So that's all I've got. There's a lot of great things happening in Puntin, but that's, that's my rant for today.
So my rant is, it's probably a little similar to one I did a little bit ago, but I, the flood of emails where we're dealing with and actually the amount of stuff we have on our plates right now, and I, maybe it only makes me all the more careful. We're trying to be extraordinarily careful that something important doesn't fall through the tracks and maybe the assessors and the hiring of lawyers are a good example of that and just all the more. So the rant is just a lot on plate, need for vigilance, I think, that we don't, that we don't miss something. The rave is, actually, last Wednesday night was, I think that went amazingly well. And I think the side piece of that is I looked out at all these people, this little town, so much talent, some people with a few quirks, but that was a roomful of people really trying hard to do well. And we are like really, really blessed to have the people working we have.
And we haven't, I see a lot of towns where it gets into an institutional kind of tops-down thing. We don't have that and that's good. Everybody's, and I think it was good for the people themselves and I think they liked having a forum. We've got to make sure we keep that forum going.
And the other rave in that, I think, which I mentioned that night, is I think we took a risk and they took a risk and I think something real beautiful's beginning to grow out of it. I mean, it's going to be a little messy, but...
Always is.
Yeah, we'll figure it out.
Yeah.
But, yeah, along the way, it just was a great, great communication forum. It really was, to find out what concerns people have and what they're working on and for everybody to hear what other, what challenges other departments have. It's just nice. And we're all on the same team, working together and it just really felt like that.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, with you.
So there.
All right, anything else for tonight?
Good enough.
I don't think so.
All right, all right, I'll make a motion we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
See you next week.